I'd like to call the Dallas City Council Work Session Order for Monday, December the 9th, 2024. Have Secretary Call a role, please.
Council President Schilling.
Here.
Council Adams.
Here.
Council Berantos.
Yep.
Council Briggs.
Here.
Council Collins.
President.
Council Fitzgerald.
Here.
Council Jantsch.
Here.
Council Shane.
Here.
Council Verden.
Here.
First item on the agenda is the Library Annual Update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. So, tonight we have Andrea McCallister with us, and she is one of our library employees, and she's going to be giving the report tonight. It's all by Andrea to come up to the podium, and she can give the presentation.
Thank you. Hello, Council Mayor. I'm happy to present the annual report for the Dallas Library. We had a very eventful year this year. I didn't realize how many events we had until I tried to fit them all into one PowerPoint, but we had a lot going on. So I'm just going to try to breeze through our everyday daily activities and get to the fun stuff, the events. Let's see. So we serve patrons from Dallas, Rickoryal, Fall City, and other areas. We have people coming from Independence, Monmouth, Salem, McMinnville. A lot of the different libraries come into our library. We're part of the Shemekka Cooperative, CCRLS. That includes all the libraries listed here. That's 18 libraries. So if you get your library card in Dallas, your card will work at all of these libraries listed here, or you can put holds on items from those libraries and have them sent to This is a breakdown of our collection. We have several titles in regular and large print, audiobooks, DVDs, Blu-rays. We stay stocked on a lot of new releases and older titles that you might not be able to find on streaming, and if we don't have what you're looking for, we can definitely get it from a library in the system. We also have for checkout, mobile hotspots, guitars, ukuleles, launchpads, which are tablets that come preloaded with educational games and activities for kids. Oh, sure.
How does a mobile hotspot work to be checked out?
They check out for three weeks. It's like having Internet in your house, and from what I understand, you can use unlimited -- it's an unlimited amount of data you can use on those, so they're very popular. There's a lot of holds on them. We also have STEAM kits available for checkout. These are science, technology, engineering, early learning kits for kids, and they're also very popular. Also available are cultural passes. Every household can check out one of these passes per year, and most of them will get a family or a household in for free. Some of our technical services, we have six public computers, a copy machine, a portable scanner that can be plugged into our computers so people can scan a document and email it, and we also have printing and free Wi-Fi. With your library card, you also have access to all of these e-resources. Through Libby, you can check out eBooks, e-audiobooks, e-magazines, and through the catalog, you can also have access to ancestry.com, the Chilton Library, Consumer Reports, and hundreds of more e-resources. We also offer outbound service to those that can't make it into the library due to age or disability. People have also been on it temporarily, if they're going through chemotherapy, if they've been injured in some way. We will extend due dates for those people or make deliveries. We have 10 employees, five part-time and five full-time. Our part-time circulation staff are the people you're probably going to see the most of at the front desk. They will help you find the titles you're looking for, they'll help you set up your Kindle. They really go above and beyond, and we're pretty proud of our friendly reputation. Our library page works in the back room. We get her 10 hours a week, and she does a lot of check-in and saves us a lot of hours because, as you will see, we have a lot of check-in to do. This is Mark, who insisted on having his face in the presentation somewhere. I'm sure you're familiar with him.
I think I saw him at Burger King.
Yeah. He keeps us busy with programs and pretty much just keeps us in line. The rest of us are full-time here, listed. We order books. Kelly's in charge of the outbound. Sarah does the processing and repair, and there's all the events that we have to prepare for. Some circulation stats. Here on the left is Cassinia, our page checking in book drop, which gets checked three times a day, and it's always that full, sometimes a couple of carts full. On the upper right there is Sarah checking in book drop, and behind her are holds we've pulled to go to other libraries. We always have more holds going out than coming in, which is good. That means we're picking out items our patrons want and patrons that other libraries want. On the bottom there is the courier that comes in six days a week. That's coming from other libraries, and that also has to be checked in, so there's a lot of checking in going on. At the top there is a stack of books waiting to be repaired. Underneath is Sarah. She's processing books. Every new book needs laminating or book covers, and she does all of that, along with a longtime volunteer, Anne Fairchild. She comes in once a week and processes a lot of books for us. On the right is Kelly getting ready to take a delivery, an outbound delivery out. She chooses books for people. They just give a list of either authors or subjects she like -- they like, and she'll pick them out for them. Now to the events. We had a lot of events this year. We had over 6,300 people participate in our events. This is storytime. We have storytime three times a week. Betty plans for this. That's almost 150 storytimes per year, like two preschool storytimes and one infant toddler storytime. She reads three or four stories, does songs, games, marches through the library with the kids, and does a craft. It's a lot of preparation, and a lot of people come to it. It's very popular. We have a STEAM night several times a year, so the kids can check out all of our STEAM One of our new events we had last spring was a Mad Hatter Tea Party, which had a lot of Alice in Wonderland activities. Pokemon Party, I think we've done that four years now. It's very popular. We do that during our open hours, so our staff is really involved in that. This is slime making, and this was a new one for us, and I have a little video here. I don't know if it'll play sound. Hopefully not. But I just want to give you an idea of how many people we can fit in the Grace Scatterday Room. This was formerly the Senior Center. We had signups for this event. It was totally full, and we can fit a lot of people in that room. We will definitely be doing this one again.
What do they do with it after it's made?
My daughter took it home and made kind of a mess on the counter with it, but she loved it, and it was very popular, even the older kids like to do it, which was kind of surprising. Okay, go next. This is the summer reading events. We had all of these events happening in June and July. They were at Dallas City Park, and those were very well-attended, and we were very lucky with the weather this year. In summer reading, we had over 800 participants of all ages, adults, teens, and kids. On the left here is Kara, one of our staff members. She's taking some stuffed animals out to the area businesses. We have what's called a critter hunt. The kids -- they're hidden in each business, and the kids can go find them and enter for a chance to win one of the stuffed animals. Also in her wagon there are oversized pages from a picture book, and those go in area businesses also, and people can go around and read each page of the story and come back for a chance to win a copy of the book. So it's kind of nice to get the downtown businesses involved. We also gave away a lot of gift cards from local businesses too as prizes. Those were very popular. This is the summer reading party and party here, these last two photos. And this is also a little video that I played. I don't know. Oh, it's got music. But this little girl was so excited. We hired these -- we hired these characters to come, and they interacted with the kids, and the kids were just so excited. It was pretty cute. Teen events. We also had a lot of teen events this year. We had a lot of game nights. Chocolate Olympics was during summer reading. Most of our teen events involve food in some way because that's how we get them into the library. Breakout, which is like an escape room game, and making tie-dye bags. More teen events, we had movie nights, improv night, and Oreo taste-off. We got to try all different kinds of weird flavored Oreos, like grape and green tea, and they voted on their favorites. Harry Potter Night. This is one of our most popular events for all ages, kids, teens, and adults. Every year that we've had it, we've had people waiting outside the door for 20 minutes before we open. It's a pretty fun event, and it takes a lot of work from staff decorating and everything. Paint Nights. We had several paint nights this year for kids, teens, and adults. Everything is free, all supplies are provided, and they're always full. We have signups ahead of time, and every time we fill up. We did several free movies this year for adults and teens and kids. Always have popcorn, and sometimes we get prizes. We had several science programs this year. Don Anderson came back. He's a regular speaker. He's from the Evergreen Aviation Museum. Richard Berry was a new speaker we had. He used to be the editor of Astronomy Magazine. He talked about the Ring of Fire eclipse. More science programs. We had Dr. William Orr, who talked about prehistoric mammals that were found in Kings Valley, and the Oregon Red Pile Man was here just a few months ago and brought in a lot of different lizards and snakes. Cultural events. We had a lot of cultural events this year. Valentina Ortiz did two events for us, one for kids, one for adults. She told ancient stories of Mexico. Will Horniac, Celtic stories and poems and songs. Alton Chung, Japanese-American experience in World War II. He's a great storyteller. And then our Celtic harpist, who have been with us for several years, they're very popular, Arielle Frankfurter and Lisa Lynn, and we're going to have them back next year, too. And some more cultural events. We had Okaja Afrozal playing music from Ghana, and Ballet Papalado, Mexican Folkloric Dance, that was for all ages. And we also had all of these author visits this year, a lot of fiction and nonfiction And I had to highlight this one, David G. Lewis. We had over 100 people show up for his event. He was very, very popular. Tribal Histories of the Willamette Valley. Our Grace Scatterday Room gets used a lot, not just by us, but by outside clubs. We have a yarn crafting group that meets twice a month. Dungeons and Dragons meets twice a month. A Spanish-speaking group meets together to learn languages, and also a chess club. And all of our events, all of our library events are free. We would not be able to do that without our community partners. Our Friends of the Library pays for most of our programs. They pay for our movie license. They pay for all of the supplies for our kid events. Our grant through the Polk County Cultural Coalition pays for our author visits. We received a grant from the Dallas Community Foundation for large print and audiobooks, and the Dallas Events Center and the Majestic let us use their venues for free when we can't fit everybody into the library. And also our library volunteers. We would not be able to do anything. All of these events require a lot of volunteers, and they also help us with shelving and day-to-day things like that, too. Looking ahead, we're hoping to do a lot more family activities because people like to have places to bring -- that they can enjoy with their children. But our biggest event that we're looking forward to is the Library Comic-Con. Our first year, we're going to try that. We already booked a few authors and illustrators and some more costume characters because that was very popular, so we're all very excited about that. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the library. We have a lot going on, and do you have any questions?
Questions? Yes.
What's the best way to find out what's going on or the activities that are going on because you have a lot of fabulous activities?
We have a Facebook page and an Instagram page, but also we have an email list that will just email you about our events, and that's probably the fastest way because we'll send out last-minute reminders on that through that email list, and we can sign you up if you just give us your email address, so.
I just want to make a comment that you guys -- I thought the Parks Department rocked, but you guys are awesome, and I just wanted to let you know that we really appreciate all those activities and everything you do for us, and it just hit me that most of -- a lot of that is done by Betty, and I know that she may be headed east in the next few months. Are we looking at covering that track as a huge hole?
Yeah, we do have some -- yeah, we have a person that's been learning everything. We have people paying attention to what she's doing. Yeah.
I just want to thank you so much. We -- I work at Morrison Campus, and we're the only school in the district that doesn't have a library, so it's fantastic. I bring the kids down twice a month. We walk in. Everyone is super helpful and kind, and I think all but maybe five students at that school now have a library card, and they're all over the website and doing research and learning language things, so we just --
That's great.
-- appreciate you so much.
We love it when they come in because it really -- we get a lot of library card applications in, and that's fun.
They get so excited. They really do. It's a library day, and they're 17 years old, most of them.
Yeah.
So it's fantastic.
That's great. That's the age group we're trying to get into, the teens.
I just want to pile on to what everybody else is saying. The -- pardon me. The number of -- and not just the number of events that you guys produce, but the variety, the broad scope of the all -- I mean, we've been to movies, we've been to some of Alton Chung's presentations and 15 other things that slip my mind at the moment, but I think it's terrific that, A, that you do it at all, but B, that you cover as much territory as you do and as broader range of interests and age groups as well because you cover the entire age spectrum from teenagers to people in my bracket, and, you know, it's unusual for a city our size to be a full-service city to provide all the things that we do, and you guys are a shining example of that, so kudos.
I have to mention also our staff really works together well, our full-time and our part-time. If you ask them, oh, Betty needs, you know, 30 teddy bears cut out by this time -- I mean, they'll do it, they'll get it done, so everybody really works together really well.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Police Station Update.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. So this project is one that's not, hopefully not, a mystery to any of the Dallas City councilors here. We've been working on this project now for the past, you know, probably a year and a half to two years. Most recently, the city council authorized city staff to engage with an architecture firm. We did that, and we chose and selected Mackenzie Architecture. We have Jeff Humphreys, the principal in charge here, as well as Adam Goldberg, one of the architects on the crew. This is just a sampling of all the people that we've been working with. There's a whole army of individuals behind the two that are sitting here with us tonight, but they're the two that drew the lucky stick to come and participate tonight with us in person and to give us kind of an update on the project and kind of a work through from, you know, the need of the project to the design. We included some financial information in here, which was done by PFM. They're our financial advisor on the project. The information you have in your packet was before we had kind of a final cost estimate range for the project. We included with you tonight some additional information, which gives a breakdown of the range that Mackenzie came up with with their cost estimating team. We can talk through that after their presentation, so turn the time over to Jeff and Adam.
Thank you, Brian. Mayor, councilor, staff, thank you for having us this evening. So let's see if I click on the right button here. This is us. So just one more picture there of one of our team members. That's Kathy Bowman. She's their project manager for this project, and Brian's introduced both Adam and myself. I'm the principal in charge, and Adam is the project architect on the project. So we also have other team members that are not present, so Mackenzie in-house is doing all the building design. We have interface engineering that's doing the mechanical, electrical. JLA has been assisting the city with public outreach, and Construction Focus is our cost estimator for the project. So as Brian has described, the city issued an RFQ. Mackenzie was selected through a competitive process. Just to tell you a little bit about Mackenzie, we've completed over 170 public safety projects. 60 of those, over 60 of those have been law enforcement facilities. This is a sampling of those. We try to design facilities that fit into the context of the community that they're in. We're really excited about yours. One, we've worked with the city for a number of years. It's exciting to see it get to the point that it has. It's also an urban setting. You might consider yourself a small community, but it is a downtown, and so it brings an interesting challenge associated with the design, and a lot of these facilities are not like that. They're very remote, so I want to share with you a little bit about what came out of that. But giving you a high-level overview of some of the steps that we went through, some of the challenges -- gosh, I cannot even read that here, so I'm going to refer to my own notes, so maybe just turn that. Okay. So some of the deficiencies associated with this existing facility is it doesn't meet ADA requirements, it doesn't meet essential facility requirements, it doesn't meet energy code. There are a number of different code-related items that the existing police facilities do not meet. In addition to that, a lot of the building systems have reached the end of their useful The police department is spread across a couple of different facilities, so it makes it so it's not quite as efficient as it could or should be. And then also, there's not really secure parking for it. They have to park in the street, as you know. So that's that. Moving to the next piece here, and then we'll flip the page again so I can refer to my notes. So there is insufficient space for both male and female officers. There's not a place for trauma-based design, so if you're dealing with a traumatic experience and you need a place to recharge that's safe, we don't really have a space that's actually like that. Currently, the facilities have inadequate space needs associated with them, including evidence processing. In some instances, you may have people that are actually eating their lunch at the same space that they actually may be processing evidence. That's really not something that you want to have. So those are some of the deficiencies that we see with the existing facility, just high level, and Adam's going to talk to you about the design that we came up with to meet those -- the needs of your police department.
Thank you.
Good evening. As Jeff and Brian said, I'm Adam Goldberg. I'm your project architect. I oversee a lot of the kind of day-to-day activities throughout the design of this project, and will continue to do so once this bond measure passes. I'm excited to share a little bit about the design of the project, the site plan, floor plans, and even a very exciting rendering with you all, as well as a bit about the process that got us to where we're at today. So in front of you is our site plan. Just outside our window here is our sites. This is assuming a complete demolition of the existing police annex building and the itemizer observer. The middle of this page here, that primary blue, light blue box, is the footprint of the first floor of the new police facility. It's really the kind of north-south bar there. This is an interesting situation that Jeff described, a very cool design opportunity of this urban downtown, historic downtown environment, where we call a zero-lot line condition, where we're building very tight two existing buildings and really have one main facade that we're designing to, which is the one along Court Street on the north. So this site led to a -- after a programming effort through with the city and the police department, we landed on, after three different sites iterations, we ended up with what you're seeing here, which is this almost L-shaped opposing bar where we have a one rectangle facing north-south on the first floor, and then on the second floor, it rotates 90 degrees and faces Court Street even more. And underneath that portion of the second floor where it's rotated, you're looking on the kind of right side of the middle of the page where you have this blue hatch. That's the under -- not underground, it's the secure parking that's below this second floor space with the second floor shown, superimposed, the kind of lower portion, and then just a few parking stalls that are truly open air on the very bottom, the south of the page. This leaves you with 13 secure parking stalls, so there's a secure gate right at the top of the page, pretty close to where the existing drive aisle is into the parking lots as it currently exists. And then we have a secondary exit on the south side of the site, as well as access to the trash and a new shared generator between city and police.
Can you take a question, or do you want to wait to the end?
Take it now.
Okay, well, I'm wondering, I'm sure there must be a technical reason why not all of the parking spaces covered some of this open air. What's the reason for that?
It's largely a cost item. We knew we were going to be tight to get everything we wanted in here for the budget the city required, and adding an additional cover beyond just what's naturally occurring that covered of the second story. It would have just been additional cost to do so.
I guess what I'm really asking is why not just expand the second story so that it covers that entire space? And what I'm hearing is it's basically just a cost issue?
Yep. It is a cost issue, but usually the driver is --
You're looking to have approximately half of the secure parking actually covered. The idea there is to prevent dew or frost from accumulating on patrol vehicles when officers come back to the station and to protect the evidence or any of the materials that the officers are bringing from their patrol cars into the building, so it's not necessary to have the entire secure parking actually covered. We are targeting more than half of it with that second floor.
It's not bad.
And so there is the benefit of like, well, hey, we're getting the benefit of having covering from that second floor, but there's not a need to have additional secure parking covered.
I just wondered.
Yep.
To a more detailed view of the layout of the first floor, so if we are -- I'll guide you through this space quickly. So in the green at the very top of the page where you have your vestibule, all the green is really your public-facing space, the public-facing components of the project. Your lobby has direct access to the records counter through a transaction counter, three -- room for three staff, with four folks. three, room for three staff, with four folks having their own, own desking space back there, as well as, all the yellow is, is purely for, for record staff and record storage. Everything beyond the, the green is, is all secure for police use. We have some circulation space shown in the gray, as well as a, a private single-user restroom specifically for police staff. And then, just about everything on the southern half of this, this first floor is for evidence processing and evidence storage, minus a couple ancillary spaces for, for mechanical systems. And everything on the right is just a, a zoomed-in view of our, our secure parking. Moving up to the second floor, it's entirely police functions up here. You can come up either of the, the two stair shafts, the, the one on the left page was access from the, the first floor on the, off the records hallway, and then on the right is actually the stair that comes up through its own enclosure, through the secure parking. So, once you're upstairs, a nice central spine for, for circulating through, through the second floor. But we have an ample-sized break room with access to a uncovered break room patio that's open air, as well as some, some IT and equipment storage rooms that are off that break room, shown on the bottom left of the page. The record supervisor, lieutenant, chief's office, and a small conference room for them is shown on the upper-left portion of the page. A small elevator lobby off of, right at the, the green at the, the top middle of the page has its own, again, this is the only public-facing element on the, on the second floor, with, with access to its own single-user restroom and a soft interview space. Going off of that, you can enter into this multipurpose room that is divisible with a big operable partition that can be used for either larger trainings or a briefing room, depending on the arrangement of that space. And on the kind of bottom center of the page is really all of your, your office functions, your shared desking for, for patrol, for your detective suite, two patrol supervisor private offices, semi-private, shared, and then a detective's room, a private detective's room off of the, the suite itself. And then the whole right side of the page is really your, your locker rooms and toilet shower rooms for, for staff changing. From there, we can talk a bit about our first community outreach meeting that took place in early October here in City Hall. This is a really fun part of the design process where we start to take the, the public's input into what will become the eventual design of the building and the exterior design of the building. So, we, we walked everyone through what we call a red-green-dot exercise, where we brought, I think it was three, three full boards and an extra one for context of the, the city surrounding buildings, but just some, some precedent projects, some, some, someplace to start to get input from the public on what they like, what they dislike, what we feel might be appropriate, and start to gather a sense of what we think the, the building might look like with this input from, from the public. So, looking at this, some of the, the things that the public was really drawn to was nice punched openings instead of, you know, large swaths of, of glass and something that was too modern, but something that really was reminiscent of the, the beautiful downtown historic sign of, of Dallas, and something that really fit in with the surrounding conditions and wasn't overwhelmingly modern or stuck out too much. So, that, that led us to, to where we are today with, with this beautiful rendering of the, the front of the, the new police station. You can see the, the, the context of City Hall just to the left and the existing historic building at the, the corner to the right. This really, we feel, brings in a nice mix of what was received from the, the public and working with the city and, and Tom and Jerry and the folks with the, with the police to bring this to be something that is really representative of downtown Dallas and really respects its context within, within downtown Dallas, and is also still a, a modern, fresh building and something that will last a real long time here.
Any thoughts of, of putting some type of a concrete barrier by the front entrance just in case somebody would, you know, have an idea of smashing in there or that type of thing?
Yeah, that's something we, we take into consideration whenever we're doing a building. So, in, in this case, we actually, at the bottom of the building, we have, there, there are these beautiful little planter boxes, but they're, they're a lot more than that. They are this solid concrete element that would, would be a vehicle deterrent and would not be able to presumably make its way through that.
Yeah, I mean, towards the front door.
Yep, yep. This, yeah, those, we also have some additional trees and some potential for, for other site elements, some planter boxes and some bollards as well, I believe.
That's a great observation, and we'll do continued refinement, which might be an introduction of bollards at that glass opening that you see at the, at the door. Some of this is, it's really high-level. We have a site plan, a floor plan, a character rendering on it, and there's more details like that that will make the facility much more functional and durable that we'll end up working through. So, yeah, good observation.
And there are questions, we'll head over to the cost summary.
Yep.
Oh, sorry, we have one more. This is, this is a 2D deconstruction of Court Street's north elevation here. So, we, we talked about this, this building fitting into its, its context, and we, we wanted to take the elevations, the line work of City Hall and that existing historic building, and compare that to, to really use those to, to drive a lot of the, the datum, a lot of the, the lines of, you know, windows and floor lines and roof lines of, of this new building and make sure it really fit into this, this existing building sandwich that's going into, and still felt contextual here. So, this building in the middle is, is really the, the new City Hall, sorry, not the new City Hall, the new police station. Yes?
Looks like we're moving the gen set that feeds this building and more than likely the main service gears. Is that cost included into this, which may trigger some code upgrades to that as well?
Yep, that's correct.
Was there, like, when you go into the garage there, how the grade goes up with there? Load-bearing poles there or obstructions there? What I'm asking is, can a police car go in and out, say if he was going, not really fast, but he was expediting? If there are poles there, there might, you know, be damage to property?
Yeah. It's, it's free and clear, 20 feet open, which is wider than a typical single-vehicle access. There's, there's nothing, the, the structure's handled elsewhere, so there's no, no intermediate pole once that door opens, once you're in there.
Great question. Okay. In your packets, I know you can see this, I can't see that over here. So, again, I refer to my notes, but I'll orient you, if you haven't had a chance to look at this yet. So, this is the cost summary page. So, what we've shown to you today is the site plan, the floor plan, an elevation view and a rendering of this. In addition to that, we also developed what we call a preliminary project description. It's basically a specification. It's a number of pages that describe all the structural systems, mechanical systems, and the assumptions of the different materials that are going to be in the facility, so that we have a good basis of design to actually forecast the cost on. So, and then the cost, the, the cost takeoff on it is, I don't know, I'm going to say like six pages long that describe out, this is the quantity of rooms, or sorry, this is the quantity of windows, the size of the windows, quantity of doors. They can do takeoffs based on the information that we've shared with you. So, we have three main colors here, categories. The first one is the blue category at the top, that's construction cost, and that's the hard cost for the project. The soft costs are the next two categories, which are in green for consultants, and then orange for, for other owner costs. In the blue field, the first three line items that we have are the actual takeoffs for three different primary areas. The hard cost of the building, which you can see is $6.8 million in the low end and the high end, and then the site development hard costs, so that is everything on-site, and then off-site hard costs. And so, we have a note on the right side, so we are planning some improvements to the City Hall for the physical training, because that's not a programmatic piece that's being included within the new policing facility. So, those, those are the costs that we're forecasting, and we total those across, and the variations that we have between the low and the high are basically covered with percentages. And so, the margins are the next category that we see there. The project, we're targeting a, an election for a bond measure in May of next year, and when that's successful, it'll take some amount of time to actually finish off the design, go through permitting, get our contractor on board, and go through a competitive bid process. So, we likely would be starting construction in the spring of 2026. So, this inflation and escalation category of 5% to 8% is us forecasting, these dollars for nowadays, to get to where we need to be when we start construction in 2026. There's also an estimating contingency. We have that site plan, the floor plan, the rendering in that preliminary project description, but it's not all designed yet. So, we're carrying a estimating contingency of 10% to 20% based on the low or the high end. General conditions, these are margins that the contractor, once they get on board, this is their overhead and profit, and so we're showing a variation there of 7%. And then CMGC participation, because we're going to be displacing the police, and this is a fairly complicated structure, it may make sense for the city to actually go through a CMGC delivery. It's a different project delivery where the contractor comes on during the design process, and they're an integral part of the design before it gets completed. There is a little bit of a premium associated with going through that delivery, and that's what that cost is that we're showing there, which is 4%. And then we have the overhead and profit for the GC cast at 6%, bonds and insurance, which you will require your contractor carry, and then those subtotal, and then there are two things the state of Oregon are, will require for the, for the city. One of them is the integration of green energy technology, which on your project, we're forecasting out to be photovoltaic panels to offset some of your energy usage. So, the state requires 1.5% of the total construction cost be carried for that, and so that's what that number is on there. And then there also is a Oregon gross receipts tax, which the contractor's going to pass on to you, so we're carrying that on there also. So, all the blue, I wanted to give you the rundown on it, that we're forecasting anywhere from 12.1 million to 13 points, also round up to 13.6. This high and the low, generally what we say is, let's design for the high, the worst-case scenario of what we'd anticipate the project would. But all the numbers that we have on here, the difference moving forward on this is, is this going to be a variation between percentages. We're forecasting what the cost would be for all of the, the consultants that would be engaged in the project moving forward, marketing materials. I think that the survey allow, it's an allowance that we have, the survey's already been complete, but all of the different things that we're going to either have been done or will be required on the project are being tabulated in the green field. Similar to what we've done in the, in the blue field here, we subtotal out the cost, and then we're carrying a contingency of 10%. This happens again in the owner field. What we want to do is make sure that we're, we're forecasting everything that we anticipate. We're carrying escalation factors, but for the unknowns, that we have a pool to draw from. And so, here we're carrying 10% for something that might come up that we don't know about, so that we have something that we're not going to be over-budget on. So, that carries our consultant costs to be $1.8 million to just over $2 million. And then owner costs, these are all owner costs, but the orange field here, we have labeled as owner cost, and these, this is your fixtures, furniture, and equipment, so all of your new desks, all your chairs, that's the first line item that we have on there. Space saver, that is actually fixtures, furniture and equipment, but it's an expensive item when it comes to police facilities, and we break that out so you can see that. So, that is their high-density rolling shelving for their evidence rooms, that is the lockers for the officers, and so that's a separate line item, that is a budgetary number that we got from Space saver, so that's a good bid number on that. We're also carrying AV, fitness equipment allowances, telephone data, security, and so those are things that you will be purchasing. Then there's a number of different things on here that are fees, so the state requires or charges a bully fee up to $7,500, so we're tabulating that on there. And we've taken a pass at forecasting the building permit and the SDC fees based on staff's comments, and so we're carrying those. You can see it subtotals, we're carrying a 10% contingency, and that brings us down to a total owner cost of 1.4 million to 1.5 million. And when you categorize or add up those three line items for each of those, that gives us a total construction cost on the low end of 15.4 million or a 17.1 million on the high end. And then you can see we're carrying what the cost per square foot is. We do a number of these types of facilities, and we're always in the know of what the cost per square foot is, and your facility is tracking with what we're anticipating for other public safety buildings right now. And so, that's, that's it for the cost summary. If there's cost questions, we can leave it on this page. If there's not, we can go to a different page.
Tell me what bullies stands for.
Bureau of Labor and Industries.
Can you remind us how many years this is going to get us through? That might not be a you question.
That's a me question. So, you know, we're planning on this building getting us through at least 30 years. You hope to, you know, survive a little bit longer than that, but yes.
So, since I'm a social worker and not a mathematician, can we do that 17 million divided by 30 years?
Sure.
That'd be great. I think that would also be very helpful for all y'all going forward, because that'll help you to sell this bond, because it's a very different thing to say 17 million per square foot. That, that, I mean, most people don't care per square foot, but if you're telling me 17 million over 30 years, that makes a lot more sense to most of us. I'd love to know that. Are you, are you actually doing it right now? You're brilliant.
So, over 30 years, it's about $566,000 per year.
Divided by how many million of us in the city of Dallas?
There's not that many people.
So, it's basically free.
Not quite, not quite. We can, we can talk about the, the cost per citizen in a few minutes.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Other questions for us?
I had a question on the, the green roof. Is that grant that we're applying for factored into these numbers?
So, no, these numbers do not include the discount that the grant would give us. So, these are the cost of the project without any additional funding sources. So, if we were to receive the grant, you could discount the amount of the grant award.
Any questions?
I think it's ready to run away for that. So, I'll, I'll touch a little bit on Counselor Briggs' question regarding the green roof. For those that aren't familiar, I've not been able to talk with everyone. So, one of the, the things you need to think about when you're building a new building is how you convey and treat your stormwater. And so, we're obviously building more of a building on the site than what currently exists. You know, a good portion of the site's paved, and so you accommodate that stormwater. But, so, when we looked at this building, we were considering a different, a couple different stormwater options. One is to do a subsurface, you know, storage and treatment. The other is to do a green roof. And so, we opted for the green roof in particular because the Department of Land Conservation and Development through a legislative program called the Community Green Infrastructure Program is offering grants. It's the, it's a pilot program for them, and so that's good in a couple of ways. One, not a lot of people know about it, it's not a well-established grant program yet. And so, we applied for that, for that grant. There was three kind of categories of funding. The category we applied for was under an economic development project, meaning that we would employ, or try to, or try our best to employ, members from a community justice or environmental justice community who benefit from this project. So, that would be, you know, people with low incomes, seniors, and, you know, people who have health and challenges, disabilities, you know, other people like that. So, we, we put in our grant how we would do that, and we asked for $500,000 to be able to go towards the green roof. The green roof, total construction, including not only the green roof, but also the planters, all of the streetscape improvements, including the sidewalk, the driveways, the street trees, all of that's incorporated into, to that cost of that grant. That total cost was a little north of $600,000, and so we're applying for $500,000 to be paid for by the grant. I'm feeling very optimistic that we will get that grant, and we will know in January of 2025 whether or not that award is given. So, you will have information going into the question of whether to put this, this building, this project out to the voters, knowing whether or not you have that grant. So, that's some good news. So, let's jump into, and I'm going to keep the architects there in case there's more questions.
What have you done to make this ADA-compatible?
We could probably both tag-team it. So, the building is fully compliant with, with ADA requirements, so we have a, the entrances or the... So we have a, the entrances or the entrance is accessible to the public. We have an elevator and I'm speaking more from the physical standpoint, but we're meeting all the requirements or will meet all the requirements associated with ADA.
Is, is the green roof a part of the green technology?
No, that's not part of the state requirement. So that would be the photovoltaic, you know, portion of the project. So, okay, well, I'm going to show you two kind of financial numbers that are near the back of the packet. So starting on page 55 and 56 of the packet, this was kind of an estimate. So we just got the cost estimate completed this last week. So we didn't have this information that we passed out tonight in time to put in the packet. But we had PFM run just some numbers for a 17 and 18 and a $20 million project, just to give us an idea of what the cost per thousand for a resident in Dallas, I'm a homeowner in Dallas, a property owner, it would be. And so page 55 is what's called a level debt service. So there's two kinds of ways that bonds work. Either there's a level debt or there's level levy. A level debt means you pay the same amount of debt service each year over the life of the loan. And so level debt services are, are the less common approach that cities take because as you can imagine, as your assessed value grows over time, right, over 15, 20, 30 years, however long your debt program is, you're going to add more assessed value, right, over that time. City's going to grow some, property values are going to improve and so that assessed value grows. Well, as that assessed value grows and you're applying, and you're asking for the same amount of debt to be collected, you know, in terms of a debt payment, you have to, you can decrease the amount that you charge the residents year over year until the end of the debt is paid. So you're paying more upfront, right? So your citizens are paying more in the first few years of the, of the loan repayment and less at the end because usually there's more payers as your city grows and their assessed value is more. So the advantage to a level debt is that there's less money overall that's paid. The disadvantage is that your, your payers are paying more upfront and less at the end. So there's trade offs there. But as you can see with a level debt service, the levy rates on average for a $17 million bond is 49 cents per thousand. For an 18 million, you're at 52 cents per thousand. And for a $20 million project, you're looking at 58 cents per thousand. If you flip over to page 56, the last page of your packet, this is what's called a level levy rate calculation. And so again, for a 17, 18 and $20 million project, you're looking at the same amount that the taxpayers would pay each year, right? So there's being the same, roughly the same per thousand cost each year. So as you get more payers, you're going to be able to afford more debt. So you pay less debt upfront instead of it being an equal amount of debt each of the 30 years. In this case, you're paying less debt in the beginning and more debt at the end because you have higher values, more payers, their ability to collect more with the same amount of per thousand cost, right? So again, under a $17 million project, you're looking at 52 cents. $18 million project, you're looking at 55 cents and a $20 million project, you're looking at 61 cents. So the cost per thousand average is a little bit higher because again, you're paying a little bit more money over the course of, of the loan. So we handed out tonight some revised numbers based, that PFM gave us based off of the cost estimates that the architects and their cost estimating team was able to give us. So if you flip beyond the first page, go to the second page, you get in, you'll again look at the level debt service. And so the two columns on the left, so the one that's highlighted in blue and the one that's highlighted in like a light tan color, that's the 15 million, you know, roughly $15 million project, the low end, and then the 17 million dollar projects on the high end. The last two columns on the right assume the city gets the $500,000 grant. So for right now, let's not discuss that we get the grant because that's an unknown. For a level debt service, you're looking at about an average of 45 cents per thousand for a $15 million project on the low end. On the high end, you're looking at a 50 cent per thousand payment. Now that's on average. Again, if you look at that column, let's go to the, the blue column. And so for a $15 million project, taxpayers would pay a 67 cent per thousand in year one, right? Year two, 64 cents. Then it goes down to 62, 61, 59, all the way down to year 30, they're going to be paying 28 cents per thousand. So that's again, you're seeing, you're paying more upfront, less at the end. So it's a little bit harder to digest as far as, you know, what's my impact, you know, to my wallet book? If you go to the last page, this is the level levy rate. So again, we'll look at just the, the first two columns, the blue and the tan kind of colored column. So for a $15 million project with a level levy, meaning you're, you're paying roughly the same per thousand cost each of the 30 years, is 47 cents per thousand. And for the high end of the project cost for the police station, you're looking at a 52 cent per thousand. So that's the cost per property owner. The average cost, or the, not the average cost, the average assessed value of a, of a single family residence in Dallas is just under $250,000 in 2024. So if you look at the, the high end cost of a level levy rate, they're going to be paying, you know, just over $125 a year for the police station project. An average home assessed value in Dallas would pay that amount. So that's the cost. Getting to Counselor Collins' comment of what's it cost our citizens? If it's, if it's less expensive or if we get the grant, that cost would go down a little bit, but they're still going to be in the, you know, 115, 120 range per year for an average assessed value price home in Dallas.
So the average, do you think that the average? Home in Dallas is appraised at 250?
Assessed.
Assessed at 250.
Assessed at $250,000.
So at 51 cents times 250, that's $127.50 a year.
Yep. And so, you know, not, not every house is, is equally assessed or valued, right? So, you know, some houses would pay more and other houses would pay less, but on average in Polk County, well, the Polk County assessor has looked at the average single family house in Dallas and the average assessed value is around $250,000. So that'd be the, the average we'd be looking at.
Brian?
Yep.
Do they, are there any existing, and you mentioned grants, so grants, financial assistance, second assistance with the building of the police station, does anything exist through the state or the federal government?
Yeah, certainly. So, you know, a community green infrastructure grant is one program that we've already applied for. And again, I'm very optimistic that we will get that. There are other opportunities, right? I am not going to let our legislators off the hook that easily. I'm going to tell them that, hey, we're building this police station and wouldn't it be great if you gave me like a million dollars or $2 million towards this project? And, you know, we can name a bathroom after you or something like that. I don't know. But I certainly want to, you know, engage our legislators. You know, we have a new senator, our representative has been very good to us. She's helped us get money for other projects. And so this is a great project that I think that they'd be proud to put their name on. So, and to be able to assist us. So yes, I will ask our legislators for some money for this project. And all of that, again, will go to, you know, assuming that we don't know, you know, all the financing and all the funding that we might be able to get before the vote, the city, this is the maximum levy that we would do, right? So we would get authorization for say 52 cents per thousand, but then if we get enough money to offset, you know, the project cost or the project comes in, you know, by a contractor well under what we're estimating, we would just under levy, right? So we wouldn't actually charge the citizens the money with it, we would, that we were authorized for, we would just charge them for the money that we need to pay off the debt.
So what's the plan to communicate this to the citizens and market it with the ability to really explain how we've gone through all this due diligence and it looks beautiful? And the first thing is, oh my gosh, what's that thing costing? But it's fairly economical for what we're doing. So we.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great question. So, you know, one, we're having an open house on Tuesday of next week. We have solicited all of our, our residents and businesses in town that have a mailing address. We sent out a postcard. They should receive that in the mail last week. I know I got mine. At least my wife got ours. And so we're, we've advertised to everyone that this is going on, right? And we included in there, come see what it looks like and come see how much it's going to cost. So hopefully that generates good interest and we get people to show up. We had a lot of people at the first open house where we didn't have the postcard mailed out to everyone. So I'm, I'm optimistic that we will get a good turnout for that. So that's, that's one way. We're also inviting the public into see our existing facilities. We have some tours lined up for this week and next. So we're, we're getting people in the door and being able to talk with them about the project. We will, through JLA, the people that are helping McKenzie and the city of Dallas with the marketing is going to create a video that will, you know, take citizens, not only through the exterior of the building, but also the interior, talk about the different spaces, you know, talk about what, you know, what, what this is going to do, what it's going to cost, you know, all of that. It will be information that will be objective. So it won't be like, you know, please vote for this, but it'll be, this is what this project is, this is what it costs, this is what would happen if you vote no. So that we can use that information piece, you know, through our website, social media channels and otherwise to let people know that this is going on. And we'll, we'll spread that as wide as we can, as fast as we can. There's an ability, so once the bond measure, if it does go to the ballot by the council, you put it on there, once it's certified with the ballot, staff are no longer able to campaign. So we're restricted by election laws. Elected officials are not subject to those rules. And so, you know, the 10 of you around this table could certainly talk, talk up this project and encourage people to vote for it and encourage people to vote yes. And so, you know, there's a lot of effort and energy that I would hope that, you know, the 10 people around this table not named Brian Latta or Elaine Shutterly could do to promote this project. And so you could form a political action committee, right, that could carry the torch and do a lot of work with this. I think we have some police officers and other public safety personnel and, and other city employees that might, you know, want to do some of that work on their off time. But yeah, I think that, you know, there's going to be, there needs to be a good effort. I think we're planning for that now to engage the public to make sure everyone knows what's going on, what this is, what the costs are, so we get good information out there, right? The thing that's going to really, I think, be successful in this is, as it has been with other initiatives that the city's put forward, is to just make sure everyone knows what, what this is, right? We don't want people thinking they know or coming up with their own stories because that's, that's where you start to run into some real challenges.
All right, speaking of, sorry, sorry, Kim. Speaking of coming up with your own stories, we have people who don't even happen to reside within the city limits, but they, they feel like they're influencers and they come up with their own stories and they spread them around. And can the city use our Mythbuster site to help with that?
Yeah, we can. And, and we do, you know, with other.
Even with this bond measure?
As long as it's factual.
Yep, as long as it's factual. So, and, and we can, we can put anything on our website up until it's, the, the bond measure is certified with the county, right? Once that's certified with the county, anything that's not factual has to be taken down off the city website because there's election laws that prohibit the city from campaigning either for or against, you know, a topic like this.
So how would that work? Help me understand how that would work. So let's pretend I will no longer be a counselor. So let's pretend I hear some scuttlebutt from a person who wants to be an influencer and is saying things that are not factual. How could the city set those myths straight?
So I'll give you like a concrete example. So if, for example, you know, we know the per thousand cost of the project is 52 cents, right? And we see, you know, some, some information being spread out in the community that this is going to cost you, you know, $1.50 per thousand. The city could put on their, on their Mythbusting page, you know, there's been information about how much this project costs, here's what the cost per thousand is. That's factual information. Any information that we put out though, we would want to run by the Secretary of State's office to make sure that we're not in violation of the election laws before we put any of that information out, which we would do, just to make sure that we're crystal clear, we're doing, you know, just information sharing only, that's objective and fair. Once getting their blessing, we'd put that information out.
One other question. So I would assume that there would be an understanding amongst sitting counselors that contributing to that level of misinformation would be dissuaded.
Certainly, I think what you want from, you know, the council, what you hope for on any project, where you're asking your citizens for, you know, financial support is, you know, unanimity amongst the group, right? We are all in favor of this and we're all in support of it, right? If, if someone's kind of on the fence, like, yeah, I voted yes, but, you know, I'm not sure. It's, it's hopeful that that counselor is not going to, you know, actively campaign against. But people are people, right? And everyone has their own opinions and their own, and their own personalities. But you really, you know, in order to get a bond measure passed, you, you want the elected bodies to really be your cheerleaders, right? And, and biggest supporters of this project. So, you know, hopefully we've designed a project through McKenzie and with our police department that is something that the council could be proud of and that you want to see. And I, I think we've done that. If we haven't, now would be a great time to let us know, right? But yeah, I think that you, you really do want, you know, this group around the table to be, you know, the torchbearers for this project in the community, right? Saying this is why we need it, this is why it's, it's good and we understand that there's a cost associated with that, but we're investing, you know, in our future and our, in our safety.
Brian, and.
I'll take this question here and then come to you regardless, yeah.
Would we be able to create a QR code and put that with our water at all? Link it to the video that we're editing?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, that would be easy to do. Yep.
So this is going to be a win for the city of Dallas, but can you remind me how many police personnel that we have in, how many do, how many service city of Dallas?
Thanks for that question. And Chief Simpson, correct me if I'm wrong, 23 sworn officers and five civilians, four civilians. Four.
It's not possible to overstate the importance of the PR aspect of this. Those of us, who I think is everybody here, who've physically taken the tour and seen how claustrophobic those conditions are, all get it. And the members of the public who do that are going to get it because it's pretty obvious. So, but in the best of all possible worlds, you're only going to get a tiny fraction of 1% of the public to physically go down there and see what it looks like. So things like the video are essential. And as we go forward, because we're going to be talking about this a lot for the next six months, as we go forward down this path, anything else, anybody, and that QR code is a great idea, it's exactly what I'm talking about. Anything else that, that comes up, ideas for, for getting the word out and getting people to understand how cramped the current conditions are, it's, it's, it's all to the good and any kind of brainstorming in that direction is to be encouraged and exploited. QR code's a great example of what I'm talking about.
Not, not referencing the video that JLA is going to make of the building that's we're proposing, but our, our own communications specialists have been working on a video of the existing facilities and kind of the, on online tour that people can take. So Chief, I don't know if that's been completed yet. I know it's near the finish line.
We're at the finish line.
Yeah, so we're very near the finish line of that. That will be available online and shared through social media. So people who can't physically come down to the police station to take the tour can still go through and, and see what the conditions are like today. So that'll be available digitally. Yeah, I, I wholeheartedly agree with your comment.
This is one case where more is better.
Yep. So if there's no more questions, I'll just kind of talk about the next steps in the process. So this is our last council meeting for December, assuming that you cancel next week's meeting later today. And so we will come back in January on the 21st, which is the second meeting in January. We have engaged with Nielsen Research out of Salem. They have done polling for hundreds of money measures throughout the state. They will be putting together some polling questions for this project. And they will have that poll completed in the first week or two of January and they will have the results available and be here to present those results on January 21st. We will also, you know, shortly thereafter in February, bring to you, if the project continues to move forward and you decide that this is something that you would like to move forward with, at that time, we'll have the proposed ballot measure and title and language like that prepared by our city attorneys so that that can be, you know, moved on to the county to get on the ballot. So near the end of February is when that has to be completed and certified. So we'll have to get that work underway end of January, end of February. That's it.
Any other questions, discussion?